Yeah, I'll open the meeting, special meeting, 25 budget. Board of Selectmen, OCAM, Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 6:03 PM.
I cannot get up today.
Congratulations.
Through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We all had them.
I don't know. He's studying them.
Okay.
25 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I didn't.
You need me to print something out?
No.
Okay.
But I have it in the emails.
No, I just.
They got it. Right? I can print it if you wouldn't mind grabbing it.
Yeah.
Should explain to the people if they have anything to say, they have to come up with it.
Okay, so let me pull up. We want to pull up Allen's. Allen's was only the extras, right? We want to.
We want to pull up what was requested.
So for every board?
To make a decision on.
On all of them. So Maribel, that's, what would be the best place for the budget ones? Under the budget one?
Would be under the OCAM municipal budget 2024.
Oh my God, they're so small. Even I can't read it. Okay, so where did we start?
Okay, yes.
Start there?
I think that's the original one, right, that they gave us?
Oh, that was, yep. And then. Yeah. Although they look like they're. Do tickets.
That's the one that I, well, they. Yes, I think that they're the same ones.
Yeah, I think they're.
But here is the one that we've always gone off of in the meetings.
In this folder?
That's the one for Board of Selectmen budget in there.
Okay, okay.
And the rest of all the different boards and committees.
Okay. So inside the Board of Selectmen one, then would.
Is all the Board of Selectmen.
The ones that fall under it. Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yes. The ones that fall under the board.
Well, I know.
Oh.
I'm in trouble seeing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That or this.
They're response.
How about that?
Well, that's good.
Do you want me to open up ambulance?
Yeah, let's just go right down.
Looking to the Board of Selectmen. On the last page. So they should be in there. Ambulance, oh ambulance, no. It should be under the with Board of Selectmen. I did not see it. Doesn't mean it's not there.
Again.
No?
Relates. Ambulance.
Okay. Oh, all right. Got it.
So 27.5 was requested, 27.5 was what it was this year, and that's what the contract. Falls for until 25.
25, yeah.
Yep, this is 27.5.
Nice level now.
Yep.
Yes.
And just for the record, the. Magnet thing is crap officially. It doesn't. Oh. No. And the nice thing now, it ding-dongs if somebody shows up.
Okay. Does it run all together?
No, it like could take an hour and a half of conversation and it'll summarize what it thinks is the topic that was discussed.
Which may not be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not helpful.
Okay.
That version, but there are, there are other versions out there. But the free one is not worth.
Okay, all right.
Right now, sure.
There's one right over there. I left two over there. So we can move the one ambulance, we can't reduce that, right?
Nope, that's contract.
They're not working.
Wait a minute, no, no. He's a charm.
Next one is Board of Selectmen.
Anybody have any issues or concerns with this one?
This one doesn't include. The. Internet and all that stuff, right? Or. Office expenses, just those two items? The only thing would be is if we could somehow bring down the printing. Unless, is that the absolute minimum that that printer can do?
For the annual town book?
Yeah.
No, I think it can go down to the.
Because we went up 200.
Yeah, at least to the.
So should we change any of these? So change it to be 1500?
Yeah.
Next is, oh, that was. Sorry. Here. Think we have to update that first one, right?
Well, the hours were putting back up to 30 hours.
Yep.
And the 3%. Did we decide on 3% last meeting?
Yes, we did, and that, but there was question about whether 3% should be in this line item, or is it after the fact? Because we didn't apply 3% to others.
We should be as we're going, adding it.
Okay, to everybody, okay.
I know he put a.
A separate.
$27,000 line item, but.
Yep, but it would have been like 25 or something, or 24, because it was already included in his.
In this one, so 46,597. 20 is that line item.
Okay.
We're not touching stipends yet this year.
Yep.
Administrative services, we asked for five, we had three. Do you want to leave it at five, or do you want to?
And that was.
That's grant writers.
Right. I.
Training and things like that. So.
I mean, we may find CMR PC will be able to do more of our grants at no cost.
True.
Right? And so we could always go at the special and ask to increase this line item if there is an issue with grant writing.
So three.
Back to the.
Level fund, yeah. The education line item went from 1,000 to 3,500.
We drop it to a thou, a drop 1,000?
Yeah. 25.
You go without Lucy? Were you good with that, Lucy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Click the next real level.
Yep. And then the insurance went up, but that's.
Insurance went up 1790. That's an estimate.
And IT services went up, but that was a consolidation of separate.
The other line item was taken out, put into one.
And there might be some pencil sharpening there. But I don't know that we have that, will have that information tonight.
Yeah.
There's, there will be leftover money potentially in that.
Yeah. Can leave it for now.
Yeah, because actually the web IT. The website would be one of them.
Yep.
Right.
Because it's built into the first year grants.
That's right, yep.
Okay. Maintenance, repair, that must be somewhere else.
Yeah, that's under a different line item.
Okay.
So we removed it. Yeah.
Okay. Next is CMR PC. $27 increase.
Yeah.
Okay. Next is dispatching. And increases.
Percent. 67, 673.
Okay, so we, we went in with an estimate on this one, so. That would be a reduction.
Yep, so it's 67, 673. Point 61.
And then telephone. Yep. Yes, level funded. They charge a separate fee for telephone?
That was the.
Right, which one is this? Telephone line item under 911, the dispatch. Is that your line?
My line. That's the line that connects from the police station to the dispatch center.
Yeah, we charge it separate.
Yeah. It's an unrecorded line, yeah.
Okay. We don't expect that to go up.
I wouldn't.
Next is legal.
Legal, 15,000 is what it's been.
Yep, they were going up a little bit in. Pleno fiscal year, their hourly rate. But I, I think it still was enough to cover.
And it's, we've done a lot.
And we still.
This year, and there's still a lot left, and I think that you.
Yeah, we've never gone all.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's, and it's very minor, not a major increase.
I just leave it.
Yep. Next is municipal building. Level funded.
Yeah, it's level funded. And I don't. I think because of the warm winter, we didn't have a. Lot of expenses.
Can count on that now. What are the advantages?
I would say leave it that way, and if we need to make an adjustment, we'll do it in September.
I think so.
Okay. Next is streetlight.
Thing.
It went up 2,200? Is that correct? No.
No.
Okay, sorry. Oh, that's the, is 2,200.
Yeah.
Next is town accountant.
Did he give us?
No, I think it's, as of right now, it's still going to be the same. As far as I'm aware.
I know you saw it.
73, 140?
So we're using purchase services and salary right now to equal the total cost.
Yeah.
So the purchase, the services is done, so it's.
Then we go.
Now we've gone into just the salary wages, which the accountant stated that moving forward, it should all just come out of salary wages instead of.
And there's enough in that.
Yeah, but even for like the new fiscal year when planning, it should just be.
So we wouldn't fund purchase services?
It would be whatever way you guys wanted to do, just make sure it's one item preferably.
But we could use salary even if it's contract.
It's at the beginning, right, Lucy?
The teacher and you.
Didn't Lori, Lori say, remember that you had said that's what you had thought for last year, to be under wages? Was it wages or under the?
I thought she said put everything under purchase services, because it's.
But one item, one, instead of dipping into two, okay.
What if we end up hiring somebody, then we don't have a line item for salary?
True.
Yeah.
What do you think your chances of hiring somebody at 21, 609?
No, we're not going to hire, and if, even if we went to an employee, it would end up being more than what we're paying now.
Accountant prior was 25 hours a week, which opens up.
Oh, yeah.
Just wages. So.
Yep. But there is a, a cost to the admin assistant of time in doing. That's not really being calculated in the cost of accounting.
No.
Right, so out of those 30 hours, it'd be nice to kind of figure, we're only getting what? 15, I don't know what we get from the contract accountant, but add another, at least five hours, I would think, a week from administrative support.
Yeah.
So there's a real cost.
Well, there is, it's a scrum.
Yeah.
And getting that right along, we need.
Yeah.
A floating person.
Yep.
So if he's not going up, we can leave that. At that number, 73, 140. It's everything.
Yeah.
Software expenses.
I mean, the education, we could get rid of that, right?
Yeah.
I know Allen's looking to shave 500.
500?
500.
So we'll make that zero. And if we have somebody, we could always do a special town meeting.
Yeah.
So then what's the total on the budget?
72, 640.
Okay.
All right, next is town hall.
Till like 1995.
First of all, is custodian salary, that's got to go up 3%.
Which one?
Custodian salary.
Okay, I was going to ask you about that.
So. 81, 11.
Even?
81, 11, 25.
The whopping 236. And inflation. It's already gone.
How much is cola? Two and a half?
Three.
Three.
Electricity's elsewhere.
Heating and electricity are in the.
Telephone.
Other thing, telephone.
Went up 4,000.
Because we're merging number.
All the.
All into one bill, and they were going to be going up a little bit as well.
Yep.
Instead of breaking it up into this one's portion, that one's portion, just one bill.
And internet left. Computer services must have left too.
That was merged with our other one.
Yep. So that was like 13,500 went into that, okay.
Right.
Repair and maintenance, that went up 1,500. I mean. But that, that could be like buying a table, right?
Yeah, because some, some of the products or things I've ordered on Amazon.
These.
We purchased, it's not office supplies, right, so even cleaning products can be maintenance, repair.
And we're going to be losing ARPA.
Fixing the front door.
Which is gonna, which has been the fallback.
Yeah.
I would leave it. Supplies stays the same. But could that go down now that other boards and departments have put in office supplies?
I know, like council and agent put in their own Board of Assessors, put in a small budget for their own supplies. I know the building inspector has his own budget for that.
Yeah, Board of Health has their own line item. Do we have any historical? This was as of.
No.
Well, in '21, it was 6,600. In '22, it dropped, in '23, it went back up, 62. You could drop that to 65.
That's a nice savings. $11,000 reduction, so the new total is 33, 711, 25. 33, 711, 25. Next is what you said, Greenways. Don't we make that a?
You make that an article, yes, an article, and it's a donation. If they vote on it.
And now we're going to. So board of assessor, but there was, didn't they do an updated one or no?
They did, because they got a.
Final board of assessor, here we go.
Yeah. Yeah, the yellow one, which they revised. Okay.
So contracts went up. Legal license fees. Education, we talked, didn't, did that already go down? No, that looks like it went up.
Mm-hmm, that was when the original, that budget was submitted when they had the principal assessor.
Yeah.
Still here, obviously now with.
Zero, right?
And a contract service. They're contracted, so yeah.
Do the elected members have any education? Requirements?
There are for new members, I don't know for members that have already passed all their certifications.
Is Diane still here?
Want me to ask her or have her?
Is she here?
Yeah, I believe so. I don't. Don't remember the original members having to keep going back.
Okay.
Like the one that is missing should.
A lot of that is, I think, state provided the training for assessors.
Probably.
Okay.
Probably.
I don't think there's anything that they pay for.
Well, I know some of our RMA stuff is like forty bucks.
Yeah, 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 which, I hope we, that's what we wanna make sure people can get it if they need it.
Yeah.
For their job, or their volunteering.
Exactly, and if you have a new member that's just elected, yes, they have to go to get certified and be able to sign off on contracts and whatever.
Yeah.
Yep.
So there would be something for a new person.
Yeah, okay.
So. That's a seven hundred and fifty dollar savings. All right?
Mm-hmm.
Advertising, office supplies, that went up twelve hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Registered, it's postage went up, dues went up. Okay.
Um, do they use a lot of certified mail when they're mailing?
I don't think so.
Okay, because I was gonna say up their postage, because those, that cost just went up.
Yeah, yeah, they did up, increase, uh, postage on here a hundred.
Okay.
So that's a. A seventeen hundred, seventy-seven dollar increase, which isn't bad, since a lot of that's contract.
Yeah.
Um, so the new total is thirty-six, five fifty-five. Zero. So, um. The board of assessors was the old one.
Yeah, there's those.
So that, um. Delete it, the old one?
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah, there's the final board of assessors, and then there's a board of assessors from January.
Right, but there's also just the.
There's a revaluation.
There's a re- yeah.
Okay.
But the other one can be deleted.
The valuation, seven hundred?
Yeah.
And the. Reduce both of them. Um, next is board of health budget. Did we change it? That's correct, yeah, that's correct. We talked about going back, but, um. It's a net reduction of three hundred dollars, which we could argue is, um.
Not the grant.
Yeah, 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 you can't reduce your services.
Okay.
But we have the revolving now, which is, can help pay for the services.
Yeah. So leave this.
Yep.
Yeah.
But that is a reduction of.
All right.
Yeah. Buildings, zoning enforcement?
That's a fifty dollar increase. Now he's, um, it's a salary, so we need to three percent on that.
How does that work with the salary and the stipend? Does he, he also gets a stipend, doesn't he?
No.
No.
Well, he gets proportions of his.
Of the permits, yeah.
The new figure is twenty-four, sixty, sixty-seven.
Seventy-one dollars. And postage went up, which is appropriate.
Yep.
All right, um, next is cemetery.
Three hun- uh, three thousand, one hundred dollar increase under expenses, that's for the mowing and.
Right.
At the, um, FIDCO meeting, we decided we could lower it to eleven hundred.
Eleven thousand?
Oh, I'm sorry, eleven thousand, yeah.
Eleven thousand, okay.
So it's eleven thousand, three hundred.
And then you approved ARPA for them for the removal of the trees.
Yep, yep. Excavations? Level funding.
Level funded.
Uh, council and aid. So it looks like what's in here was without any increases in hours, right?
Sorry, say that again?
It looks like what's on the screen was level funded from the previous year.
I don't know.
No, there's a different one.
It's not at all what was requested.
Right, because it's, it was level funded.
That was the first one.
The, the original instruction said, don't touch the salaries, so that's what this is.
Okay.
This is without touching the salaries.
Okay, so we didn't submit there.
Um, so now would be the question of, um, as requested. Which I believe is explained below.
So fiscal twenty-four budget.
So what was, um, in the, what was it that you were asking for, for the coordinator wages total?
Twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, based upon hours that are being worked and, uh, based upon what's being paid in other towns. So.
How much was the, do you know what the total hours worked alone was without your two dollar an hour increase?
Yeah, we were asking for ten hours a week.
Wow.
Yeah, we were asking for twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, take it back, twelve hours.
I'm just curious, of that, how much was the, um, increase in hourly rate of the total uh, difference of, uh, twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty from the ten thousand, three hundred?
We were, we were charging an additional two dollars an hour.
So two extra hours per week and two dollars an hour increase hourly.
So if you're asking me for, based upon the ten hours. Um, and the, if, if we held up with ten hours and an additional two dollars. Hang on, zero's not gonna work. Then, um. Have you had to hurt? Sorry, 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 sorry. I have to have all these with my computer, um, award, for this. So. Just the salary alone, just if we did the ten hours that we are now doing, and we increase the salary to twenty dollars, that accounts for ten thousand, four hundred dollars. And the values would be the additional two hours at twenty dollars an hour. I'm set to two weeks, is that the way you want it broken out, Aaron?
Yeah.
Trying to make sure.
Yeah, so in my mind, I was trying to, um, do the hours first. Um, and because the, the, um, percent of increase was something that the board had stated would be a discussion after the first part was, so it's, um, the extra two hours.
But don't forget, every position is classified now.
Right.
So she's grabbing the classification thing just to make sure this fits.
Mm-hmm. I personally think the twelve hours is appropriate, um, uh, and that's kind of where I'm at at this point, is start, that's where I'm good. But then the question is, what should the percentage of increase be?
Let's see what John has or hasn't.
So.
I have no issue with the twelve hours.
If we said, um, twelve hours times the current rate, which is eighteen dollars, is eleven thousand, two thirty-two.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just gonna say I had mine.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't sure. So.
This isn't the Don Jacobs one though, right?
This is his.
Oh, it is, okay.
The FY twenty-four.
Yep.
Is where our raises brought us to.
Okay.
But that's his grade levels.
Okay.
So she.
We had put her in grade level two.
But this is.
Way back then. Same with the, uh, board of assessor and board of health clerks.
This is, what level is the custodian?
Level one.
One.
But they make more than?
Yeah. Because she had been here.
Okay.
So when we put her into the grade, we can't reduce the pay.
Right, right, okay.
You know?
So this one, she's here, but she only makes the.
Where is that positioned?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't broken out, it was classified in level two with the two clerks.
Okay, okay.
That's originally what we.
So then there was a little bit of a delay here, I see eighteen thirteen, two percent, eight fifty, three percent, eighteen fifty, that should go up a little bit.
Yeah.
That one's. Three is eighteen fifty-four, if you were just doing it based off this one. But if it's eighteen thirteen. It'd be eighteen twenty-five or eighteen twenty-four.
That's the two percent?
Yeah.
About two percent increase?
So eighteen sixty-seven is the three percent increase.
Why two percent, can I ask? Can you?
I'm not doing two percent, we're doing three percent.
If you want three, that's what I thought you were doing, right?
Yeah, yeah, not, nah, not the two.
So, um.
So two extra hours a week and.
Yep, at eighteen sixty-seven.
Three percent on the, on the wage. What do you think?
I, I haven't heard quite what you're doing, so I'll, I'll just.
Let's make sure I agree, I, we agree with the figures, oh, let me show Paul too.
Yeah.
So what we were saying is, uh, you had asked me the question at, uh, the new number of hours.
Yeah.
And at the old salary rate.
Yeah.
What would the salary be?
Yeah.
So that's fifty-two times twelve times eighteen, I got eleven thousand, two hundred thirty-two. Three percent increase, I just put three percent over eleven thousand, two thirty-two rather than split hairs. It came with eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, which I would suggest we round to eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy, okay, because.
Easy.
No sense sitting here splitting hairs, right? We're driving you crazy in the future if you do that.
Yep.
Okay, so, you know, what I'd like to hear, what else you wanna say about the budget before we interrupt?
Right.
And how's that sound, okay? So I'm seeing, you're proposing a salary of eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy, so let me hang on there with you while you do the rest.
Office supplies is listed at two fifty, is that the, is that your final?
No.
I thought you were offering to go down more.
We are. We, yeah, so let's, let's, you know.
I would, I would think you would wanna go up on office supplies.
We had submitted four hundred and fifty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now let's go, let's go with those numbers that we originally submitted, you go with the four fifty, okay? Uh, we, the nutrition, let's go to nutrition, two five, two oh, that was a figure I thought from elder services. So I'm, I'm just leaving it like that.
Yep.
We have, uh, transportation is two hundred, even, you know, level funded. Then office supplies, I calculated that based upon the ink supplies and twenty-five dollars for paper, and that brought me around four hundred and fifty dollars. So that was the original submission. Recreation, we left a fifteen hundred. Outreach, I went up to twenty seven hundred because Jan wants to do more in terms of outreach. We pulled the software charges out and expressed them separately at twelve hundred. And we brought out our professional membership, which I, I saw that what they're going to build as far as three twenty. We separated that so that we would be in line with all other departments in the town. So. Um, I won't give you a new total because I don't have it with the eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy, but. It'll be in the neighborhood, it's around twenty one thousand. I can give you the figure if you'd like.
Are, are you? Okay if I do the eleven, five seventy under? Wages at this point?
Have, have we agreed to the two hours extra?
I, I'm comfortable with that.
It's okay.
Then that's gotta go up. But you just said that's at ten hours a week.
No, that was at twelve.
That was at twelve.
Was that twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
I did it at twelve.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So let's make that eleven, five seventy. Which is a three thousand dollar increase at this point. Net increase.
All right, just keep going, keep going, Eric.
So. We don't have, in this working budget, we don't have outreach at twenty seven hundred, right now we have it at twenty three hundred.
You have it, yes, that, that's level funded, if you level funded it.
So is there room to shave potentially there?
Well, you know, the, what I'm, as I'm trying to work the figures, we're willing to shave in operating expenses. To boost the salary for. Melanie because we want to pay her what other towns are paying. We don't, don't want to deal with a salary issue, what we'd like to do is resolve the salary issue this year, put it to bed. And then we're willing to shave on the operating expenses because what we're feeling is that if we push to shove. We would just start going into donations, we go into the revolving account and. I think we're going to have, we're going to have money left over, I'm, I'm pretty sure, Eric.
To be whole, it would be nine hundred and ten dollars. If, if, if they were able to get their salary to where they'd like it, if they shaved nine tens from somewhere else. Is that something that you?
That's what we'd like to talk to you about, amen, you got it.
I mean, the bottom, bottom line, at eighteen dollars an hour, if you give her three percent increase, she's going to get an additional fifty four cents an hour.
That's fun, you know, you put it that way, Paul was.
That's, that's not right, okay?
But.
No, I'm just saying.
Fair, it's, if that's to everybody in the town.
There, there are some employees that received this year quite a bit more than, than now, okay? And again, I, I'm just saying. This particular position at eighteen dollars and fifty four cents an hour. Okay, a kid in a grocery store is making more money than that. Somebody selling at the counter at McDonald's is making more money than that. And this, it is kind of a professional position. Not asking for a whole lot, but I mean. We're asking for. At least enough to show that she's appreciated. So that I don't think, I don't think two dollars an hour is above and beyond the town's capability.
It would be thirty.
Especially when they're cutting everything else out of their budget to do it.
It would be thirteen ninety. For outreach. Instead of twenty three hundred.
Yeah, we could do that. So how much was, you said out of twenty three hundred, how much?
The new total will be thirteen hundred to, to take the nine, ten out.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so far we have spent through February for. Outreach, hang on. Aaron, let me just get, because the latest came in today from Laurie. Here we go, so let me see what was spent on outreach so far, just so I can feel comfortable. Okay, so we've got thirteen hundred dollars left in outreach out of twenty three hundred dollar budget. I would say let's do it. If you raise that salary to twelve forty, four eighty. Could make the deal. Is that what you?
Well, the difference between eighteen dollars an hour and twenty dollars an hour is twelve hundred and forty eight dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And you stay at three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, so we want to raise that salary to twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty. And the difference between twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty and eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy is nine hundred and ten, that's what you've got, right, Eric? So we've got to cut to nine hundred and ten someplace else, we're saying, take it out of outreach.
Yep. And, and you have potential, you have potential funding. If, if an emergency came up.
Yes, that's what we're figuring.
To offset.
That's what we're figuring.
That reduction, that nine hundred dollar reduction. I, I think, I think it's worth.
I think it works.
Okay.
Thirteen hundred outreach, I will tell you, I think. From past. Years. It's tight. It's really tight.
We can pull from the grant.
Are you going to have enough in the grant?
It looks like it.
You, you feel you're going to, because I, like I said, I remember that last line you put down here, you were afraid you would run out of grants.
You know what, I'm not spending what is not posted.
So we don't have a second half to spend yet.
Yeah, the second half should have come in in December.
It should have.
Came in March. I asked today.
But it's not posted first.
So it, it did come in March.
It, it was showing the trial balance in March. Because it came in in December and all deposits were posted up through December.
Yeah.
So I checked with Laurie, now I haven't had a chance to check the trial balance, I didn't get that far, but I'm assuming it came in. And I think we were going into it probably with a thousand bucks.
Okay.
Make it.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll be carrying over and we're now allowed to carry over.
Yes.
So I think we're going to be okay, now let's hope.
You just don't know what, you don't know what they're going to give you next year.
Exactly, but you know, we'll do the, and we still have the donations, we talked about it, we have the donations. We've built up money in the revolving account, if we have to, we'll charge more for Zumba and fitness. So that's, we were discussing back and forth what we could do and that's, and also, you know, if outreach gets tough. And we have recreation, we can deficit spend within operating.
Oh, yes, you can do that.
As long as the overall operating expense is a positive.
Yes.
So between those. Avenues. I'm not, I think we're going to be okay.
Great.
Okay. I, I still think it's, it's, it's pretty lean.
You know, we don't deny it.
See how it's going to be.
We're happy to hear you say that, Lucy. But we're willing, you know, if we have to move something from recreation, we will.
Okay.
Are we good with council on aging?
Except I just have one comment from FinCom meeting last week. Paul was saying about the money for Melanie that. We remembered that last year Claire asked that she gets that three hundred dollars extra. You made a comment at FinCom meeting that she didn't even get that, that it went into the general fund of the town.
Sure, it was returned.
No, it lists right here that she earned ten thousand, three hundred dollars.
Well, that's the budget.
But the three hundreds was in there.
Was it spent, Lucy? I think what Paul's saying, but wasn't spent. And, you know, that's what, that's the point is.
It may, she may not have spent it, but it was put into her salary.
It was put in the line item, okay, she did not receive it.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is initially, okay, the position was supposed to pay ten thousand. Okay, somehow it could change from an hour, from a salary job to an hourly job at eighteen dollars an hour, she never even came close to that ten thousand dollar mark. On her income.
But don't worry, it'll take care of.
And all I'm just saying is, is the woman is worth more than eighteen dollars an hour, that's, that's the main thing.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that at all, I'm saying that she actually did get the three hundred that.
No, it was put in the line item, she did not receive it, okay? Not any. There's a big difference between what's put in the bank and what's paid to the person. She did not receive that.
She should have.
The whole idea of people voting for that three hundred dollars was to give her a little bit more, okay?
Exactly.
It, it just. It did not go to the person, okay, it went to the line item and the balance was returned back to the general fund. That's, that's the comment that I made.
Okay, I just want to be sure that it had been put in though, if she didn't spend it.
That's, that's, it comes upon us.
Yeah.
And we will take care of that in the.
Yeah, okay.
And take care of that in the future.
But it just sounded like the town just. And didn't do anything with it.
People voted on it, they kind of figured she was going to get a little additional, okay? I mean, that was a general feeling with the people that were voting on it. And I'm just saying that eighteen dollars an hour for the amount of time that she was allowed to work, she never even came close to that figure. And I'm just saying in fairness, I mean, I think we really want to retain this woman in this position. I hate to see her go, okay, I almost think she can't afford to even work here at eighteen dollars an hour.
But we got her up to twenty.
You know, I'm just, we're not asking for a whole lot, okay, we're just asking, you know. To try and show that the town appreciates this woman. And that, and that's what I want to see, that's what I'd like to see for all the employees, it's reality.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why we fought for the salary, we're willing to give up another area. To show that what's.
But if something is voted like that, you know, you, we've got to keep an eye on that.
We do. And that we're spending and make sure that we, we. Talk with Barbara to make sure that we are paying appropriately to the person, the money that is due to them.
That's why she, we increased her to ten hours a week. Starting in November or whatever, but it did not make up for the time that she was getting eight hours a week at eighteen dollars an hour, that's what Paul was, I think, saying. It never.
In the last half of last fiscal year, she was, she was. Paid for ten hours. I told her to put in for it and she put in for it.
Yeah, only November and December. That I know.
No, there were other times.
Okay, I didn't see those.
But you know what, we're gonna take care of this.
Right.
But.
She did, she did. Put in for it, because I was the one that signed off on it.
So we're not turning money back into you on the salary, okay? All right.
So we're good?
Just so you understand.
Exactly, exactly, because the other year we did get money back on salary and I never understood why. Because I told her to take the full amount. And we, like you said, we did get money back and I didn't understand why, but she didn't. Keep. Filling out her time sheets with the, the higher amount of money.
Because she was told that she could only work eight hours a week, and anything over eight hours a week was on her time. And then.
That's not, that's not what she was told.
Okay, well, you know what? Don't worry about it, you're not going to get money back on the salary.
Because actually we did get money back on it and we should not have.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll make sure that never happens.
Yeah, I agree, no, I agree.
Okay.
Are we good?
Good.
We're good.
Okay, emergency management.
We should be fine.
Emergency management is.
Level funded. Uh, next is finance, and finance I think was level funded.
Level funded.
Next is highway.
Highway. Because I have lots of notes on.
Okay, just want to say thank you. But that is the one with. The higher. Wage is not the level funded one.
Yeah, that's not seventy six, five, seventy five.
Seventy six, five, sixty five. Is it ten dollar difference?
Uh, seventy five, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Five seventy five. And this is advertised at seventy three to seventy five.
Okay.
Depending on experience.
Yeah.
And then level fund the weight, part time wages too.
So one oh seven, three ninety three?
Yeah.
And then we got to do the three percent.
Right, right.
To both of them, right?
Oh, seventy eight, eight seventy two is what the three percent.
Seventy eight, seventy two.
Eight seventy two.
Seventy eight, eight, seven, two.
Okay.
And the next one is one ten. Six fourteen, seventy nine.
Seventy.
Nine. The. Overtime line item, summertime overtime.
Yep.
That's got to go three percent too.
Yep. And that's that. Telephone. Is that the same situation? That we've merged the telephone? So should that be zeroed?
Wait, the telephone is different.
Okay.
Because it's, the ones from Mitel comes up under, it was council on agent, library. Public safety, so I don't know if that's, it said police. Town hall. And. Library, did I say that one? Town hall, library, council on agent. Police. Just one more.
Fire.
No, maybe.
I thought fire just split something.
No. Let me book it up.
That's also a part of his cell phone.
Yep.
Oh, that's what it is.
Oh, that's all cellphone?
Well, I don't know if it all, but.
I don't think it's all, but it's. Good half of it is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you figure a hundred dollars a month easily. I still think we underfund building maintenance, but.
Yes. Well. Take a thousand off the phone thing and stick it on the maintenance.
And, I mean. I wonder why they're not on Mitel? And.
I don't know that they're not, because it might have been highway fire.
Okay, that's what I thought, I remember reading.
Trying to think of the bills.
I thought everything kind of was after. Library, COA, town hall, public safety. There's one more. Maybe it is highway. I'll keep going, I'll, I'll figure it out. Find an old building, email.
Street signs increased by fifty five hundred.
Yep.
Cost of metal. And uniforms went up by five hundred. That's the cleaning.
And I think finance had heartburn over the increase in. Street signs.
Yeah.
But it's kind of like the same as a contract. It is what it is, those are the charges of. The product.
Yeah, you know. Yeah.
I don't know how we can want it to be lower.
No. It's very expensive. I think it is highway. Actually, I'm pretty sure.
All right, then.
Move a thousand?
Yeah, take that off.
Seventeen hundred and make it thirty. Thirty.
It is highway.
So they should, that, we really should be, that would be cell phone essentially. for the superintendent, right? Cuz they won't be, will they not be paying Mitel separately now?
Not when we.
Right.
Altogether, yeah.
So that one, you reduced it by a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the the new total is two sixty-two, three twenty-seven. Two sixty-two, three twenty-seven, seventy-nine. Which reminds me, if I could, should we, um, reach out to the three candidates and just let them know that a decision is likely on Friday?
We don't know that.
Okay, is possible on Friday?
Anything is possible.
Where, I mean, we lost two candidates before the interviews. I mean, who's, I would hate to lose a candidate cuz they, thinking that it's still up in the air.
I am not comfortable making a decision on Friday.
Okay.
Not even that.
Yep.
We have not discussed anything.
Right.
You know? I do think whatever we do is gonna be done Friday.
Yeah.
I'm not saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Postpone it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
But.
So there's a highway revised and then highway.
So the revised was with the ninety.
Oh, okay, okay.
As he get, turned that in afterwards, so I left them both and.
So let me, since we just made.
Check that one out before you do it, though, Aaron.
So that one shows at seventy-five, that one shows at seventy-six, five seventy-five.
Okay.
Uh, the total being two fifty-six, seven seventy-nine?
Yeah, I don't know if it was when revised, then I went back and changed it to the flat numbers, uh, for the wages.
So here's.
But you can remove that one and then just go based on the one you guys just.
Yeah, so this is the, the second one.
Mm-hmm.
Two fifty-six, seven seventy-nine. And this is the one we just did, which was two sixty-two, three twenty-seven.
Because he left something out, I, I believe, um, on one of them, but I think that that's the right one, the higher one.
Okay. So I'll get rid of the February twenty-sixth one.
There's a line item, contract services. And we funded it at ten thousand.
Under highway?
Uh, yeah, it's on the highway, snow and ice.
Mm-hmm.
He's only used thirty-six hundred. That can be cut.
So we bring that one back up then, highway revised. Oh, that's below, okay. Who was it?
Contract services, just no ice.
Okay. Okay, uh.
Is this the one that he forgot?
Yeah, there's nothing in there.
Did you already delete that one?
Let me see if it opens.
See if it's in there.
Let's see. Yep, five thousand. It's in that one, so I can just go back to the one we originally just worked on and add the five thousand.
Yeah.
So. I, you're out of, get high. Let me bring that back over me, see it. Five thousand, right there. So we bring that to what?
It was ten thousand.
Yeah, it was ten.
That was what, wasn't that an article?
This says.
Sign.
Originally was a article, and then Laurie put a, uh, line item in, but we never funded it last year. We went to special to put ten back into it.
Hmm.
But this is twenty-five.
Yeah.
So there is a line item for this.
You know, he, he wanted to leave, like, leave the line item or have it funded, I just don't know how much.
I don't think he wanted the full ten, I think he said we could cut that.
Okay.
No.
We can come back to that.
She just texted him.
Okay.
See what he says, but we can move on.
Next is historical commissioner, which I believe was level funded.
Level funded.
Level funded.
Library, those notes.
Again, line one and two need three percent.
Three percent and the hours, right?
Mm-hmm. The library and, yeah, going from nineteen and a half to twenty-five.
Of, of the hourly rate.
Mm-hmm. The power washing is coming from ARPA, right?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Still power washing and repair.
Salary, power washing, and I'm thinking.
Sorry.
Okay.
Do we know if they have any candidates yet?
I think they did.
They hired one or they chose someone?
They hired, but they had strong candidates.
Okay.
And, and I believe, um, because of the twenty-five hours, it made a world of difference in the candidates.
Okay, more desirable.
Yeah.
So that first line item will be forty-two, one seventy.
And that's with the three percent?
That's with the three percent and the additional hours.
In theory, they may not fund it, or they may not contract or give it at that rate, right? If it's a new person.
That's up to them.
Yeah, but, but they have, they'll have up to that amount.
We're gonna fund it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And twenty-eight, six, thirty-nine, fifteen is the next one.
Yep. So the one outstanding question in here, which it probably wouldn't be in here, of the technology. I think that's what they're paying for their, um, IT support.
Okay, yep. Do we have an estimate?
I emailed Paul in which that I linked Sam and Paul, and then they've been, I think they've exchanged numbers and our emails and coordinated, cuz he said the best route for him would be to go to the library, see exactly what they need, what they have for equipment. I have not received, uh, an estimate back, but they are in connection and working on that.
All right.
I'll just leave it as they requested.
Mm-hmm. Text.
Anything else on this one?
Nope. Uh, with the Mitel, what does this say?
Oh, that's, so that'll merge with.
That we could reduce telephone, or is it already out? It's already out.
It's already out, seven hundred and eighty.
Yep. And next is moderator.
That's.
Level funded.
Funded.
Next is fire.
Thirty-eight, five, forty-four, sixty-six is the number one line item, chief salary.
Yep.
This is where we're gonna need discussion now.
Yep.
Part-time salaries. That's gone from forty-two, four to fifty-five, twelve thousand, five hundred dollar increase.
It's, and it's the train, it's essentially training time for those extra.
Yeah.
Uh, firefighters. Could we split it? I did mention to him that this might be something that might need to be looked at. And he, um, basically said he would have to just reduce the training time.
Mm-hmm.
All right, cuz he can't reduce call volume.
Yeah, no.
So, yeah.
We could try.
Yeah.
And it's something that could always be replenished potentially in the future.
That's, yeah, that's one of the things with both of those departments. Their, their budgets are the best guess estimate, they can't control what happens day to day. So. Make it sixty-two ninety-one.
Yep, good. Uh, zero dollar ninety-one?
Yeah.
That's not right.
No, forty.
The increase he asked for was twelve, five, eighty-three.
Yep, so, but I entered the sixty-two ninety-one, but obviously that's even more than the twelve thousand, so, um.
Twelve, what's this increase, twelve? That's three?
Yep.
So we bring it all the way up to fifty-five thousand?
So twenty-five, one's.
Four, twenty-six.
So if you did half of the twelve, five, eighty-three, is that what you're doing half of?
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
Mm-hmm, so I would do the forty-two, four seventeen plus six thousand, whatever the half of that twelve eighty, twelve, five eighty-three is. Of five eighty-three divided by two plus, so the six, two, ninety-one, fifty is the increase on top of the forty-two.
Forty-two, yeah.
Four seventeen, which is forty-eight, seven oh eight, fifty.
My brain cells are. God, okay, sixty-two ninety-one, fifteen, fourteen.
Better?
Yes, yes. It could do audience participation.
My brain cells are still right here.
He's reduced the.
Well, I'm actually, I didn't wanna say anything. Cut it.
So he reduced four line items.
Yep.
Here, choose tune of twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So it's only an increase of seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four, which includes the three percent increase in wages.
Right. Okay. Um, anything else with the fire?
No, that's me.
Maybe we'll see.
No, I'm not set with.
Next is Parks and Res.
Zero.
Fine. I think it was pretty clear at the last meeting. You know, five in the five and stuff.
Um.
And then we still have that five from the article.
Let's see it. So the town common, can we reduce that to five thousand?
I thought we were gonna do the five and five, and then we have the article.
Yeah.
For now, with the additional five.
And, and there is the possibility with the new highway that there potentially could be some.
We were open to whatever, I know.
You have your picnic tables for the ball field?
We have, we got them with the article last year or the year before.
The benches?
All the, do you mean the benches?
Yes.
Oh. That was a nightmare, so we found this company that Kevin had suggested based on, he got, everything was great, I set up all this, you know, all the information that they needed to set it up to be a net thirty account, meaning we get the product and then they'll invoice us. We ordered it and then it was between Kevin and I, we could never get a tracking, it hasn't shipped yet, it hasn't shipped yet. Long story short, they were having a problem with the manufacturer, we're getting the supplies, so couldn't, and Aaron had suggested some Amazon, and Kevin found them and we ordered on the Amazon, so hopefully we'll have them. We're kind of really close with baseball season, but hopefully they'll be here soon.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, planning was level funded?
Yes.
Yeah, um, next is dog.
Now dog was it?
Yeah. Then we have to do the three percent. Wish we could do a reverse, so I can just enter the three percent there, but I don't think that works. Yep.
So what's that, that's?
That work? Nope, it would be nice if it did, but.
Do you find dog office?
No.
No, really, no.
Oh, it's under, with police.
It's usually under police.
It is.
Yeah.
It should be, so that's young sixty one, twenty one.
Okay.
Thank you.
If my math is correct with the three percent, that should be a total of five thousand, four oh three, eighty six, but you might want to confirm that.
Well, then tell us.
Oh, okay.
Uh, no.
No?
What?
Fifty five.
Oh, I took the wrong number, I took the first one.
What is it, fifty five?
Fifty five, thirty four.
Mm hmm.
Two point nine eight, so there must be some change.
Uh, yeah, there is, is this a sixty five?
Sixty five?
Yeah.
There we go, okay. Expenses up to thirty. Mailing dead um bats to Boston or driving them to Boston.
Driving.
Have they done their assignments and having their paperwork signed for animal?
Inspector.
Yes.
Inspector?
Yes, they both.
Those are all done now.
And I sent them, yeah.
I notarized it and sent it in the mail.
Okay, good, good.
We good with the dog inspector?
Animal inspector?
Animal inspector?
Animal inspector.
Sorry, are we, are we good with the dog?
Oh, yeah.
Officer.
So next.
Like.
But they're, they're also our.
Control officer.
Yes, right, right. So then we've got uh police department FY twenty five budget, and then there's another one.
Yes.
Okay.
That's under the contract, so it's all set there. All time officer needs to be adjusted. Sixty two, one oh nine.
Hmm, might happen here. Why doesn't it say a hundred percent? Wonder why that formula shows there's a hundred percent increase.
Hmm.
All right, and just make it a three percent. There we go. I don't know what the formula is behind it, so. Part time salaries, yes, uh, you know what, were these already? Didn't we, I just.
Now with the three percent though, I don't.
Because look at this one, this one already shows a sixty three percent.
What you're looking at, I mean.
Oh, that's with the.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So should we go back to prior to any potential increases in hours and look at what that is, or do we?
See Alan's email.
Yeah, I was confused, but. Not because of Alan.
No.
Brain cells.
And the numbers.
Yep, lots of numbers. And, and um you gave us those, right, what you printed?
Yeah, if I, if I may, I'd like to explain, I had a conversation with Alan today. And uh he said that basically he wanted to level funded factor last year's number, which was incorrect to begin with. And so I tried explaining to him that number was incorrect, and if we're gonna level funded.
That's the email.
He said that the number would be thirty three thousand and change, which that would only give me, so if you had thirty three thousand, five, twenty nine, sixty, that would only give me thirty two hours a week without covering anything else, so we can cover holidays, we can cover sick time, we can cover training hours, miscellaneous investigations or unforeseen emergencies.
Roll up, Lucy.
So a level funded number should actually look like forty seven thousand, seventy one, twenty. And that would be a minimum as to what I could backfill the hours that I need for part time. Which is what we refunded last year's line item two in special town meetings.
To the forty?
Forty seven, seventy one, twenty should, should be the actual number. It's spelled all out in that paper that I gave you.
Yeah, I don't know where mine, I might have.
This one?
Eaten it or something?
Yeah, the bottom.
Yeah, did you have another one?
Yeah, yeah, here, this is.
Okay. Um.
We'll see, yeah.
The level funded.
I mean, the top.
Yeah, forty seven, so this uh four K should be forty seven, seventy one, twenty?
If you're gonna level.
If it were level funded.
Forty seven, seventy one, twenty.
Does that forty seven include the special town meeting addition that we made?
No, because what happened was when we did the special town uh meeting edition, it was only six thousand and some of that money came from nine thousand, of that money came back from the state for reimbursement for uh to Bridge Academy. So that money was not accounted into that figure, and I was trying to explain that to Alan today, and he didn't quite remember where that money came from, and we talked about it, and he says, but if it never showed up on the sheet, then it didn't exist. So he was trying to go back to the thirty three thousand dollar figure, which I told him would be completely underfunded, the line item.
I get that, um. The latest thing from the accountant shows you got twelve thousand, three hundred back from the state. Did you, did you see the thing today from Lori?
No.
All right, she sent it to us. Um.
I was only supposed to get nine the last time, I got.
Nine and you get thirty three hundred from the first one.
Right. Yeah, total amount.
Total amount.
Yeah, a total amount.
It's only this year.
Right, I never get that again.
It's not built into anything.
Correct.
That's carrying you till June.
Correct. Only because the original number for the fiscal year was incorrect, and that's why we tried to uh fix that number at the.
At the six thousand.
Correct. So the six thousand in addition to the money we received back from.
Right, you're the thirty two.
No, I was at, what was the original number was? Uh, let's see.
Your uh.
So originally, the number should have been forty seven thousand. It should have been forty thousand, seventy one, twenty.
Mm hmm.
Somehow that number got changed, and we had a discussion about it at the beginning of the year. And we decided at that time we'd wait till a special town meeting to make a correction on that number. In doing so, we wound up using a short number requested from the town to the line item, and then the rest of it was backfilled by the refund we got from Bridge Academy.
This year.
For this year only.
Mm hmm.
Um, we're talking next year, what, what do you need for next year?
Forty seven thousand, seventy one, twenty.
That's my question.
Yeah, that's what I need. And that'll help me maintain the uh the coverage for fiscal year twenty five, that's at a minimum. If you read what I wrote on the bottom, it explains it out, what each number represents.
So this FY twenty four budget at fifty four, four sixty four, didn't they add in the special town meeting approved to that? When they, when they created this spreadsheet?
Is it at the bottom?
Like they did.
Is it at the bottom?
Oh, I, I thought they just made this, whatever the revised amount wise, no.
I don't know, I, I thought, I remember reading that.
But she likes to keep the articles separate.
Hey.
Police could there, um, come on.
Well, that number fifty four thousand should have changed the next year with the full time uh appointment.
But that's saying twenty, fiscal year twenty four was fif- for part time, was fifty four.
I think that's what it wound up being with the uh money I got returned and the uh additional money. So basically, what I'm asking for is forty seven thousand seventy one, twenty, which would be less than that number, obviously.
You had the warrant. It was approved at town meeting.
For uh.
I can pull it up.
Yeah, you can pull it right up, I mean, I'll go.
No, he can do it, yeah.
I mean, certainly that number works better for me, but.
Not if we don't have the money.
Right. I was conservative in figuring out forty seven thousand.
I can see what you did, yeah.
Town reports. Uh, that would have been town report, annual town report?
Are we looking for the one from just in June?
Yeah, so we wouldn't have it then.
Yeah, let me go back.
The overtime has to go up three percent. Seventy six, twelve point seven three.
Three percent, yes. Oh, telephone is listed at twenty two hundred. How many cell phones do you have, Chief?
At two.
So that must be all, okay. How are you paying your MyTell?
That comes on, I think that's MyTell, and then I, I think the cell phones come out of communications.
Okay.
But we should be able to zero out then telephone, right?
Yeah, the MyTell, yeah.
Now, is it my understanding that the MyTell, all the MyTell is gonna be paid for at the town hall?
Yep.
Perfect.
No more like splitting.
I do have one phone line now that I have to pay for.
But that was in your.
Dispatch?
It's in the dispatch line item, right? Eleven, twelve hundred dollar.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just worry about that one line, that's all.
Is that the fax?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, none of the faxes are MyTell.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't understand digital.
No.
Which I find interesting.
Go figure.
We're not at the e-fax stage yet?
No. Not from the court anyway.
Mm hmm.
That's the only reason we have it.
Wow.
They fax over all the restraining orders and orders from court, new warrants.
What are we doing with the admin assistant?
I think we, I, I understand that um the admin assistant has been pivotal in the management of the um.
Details.
Detail.
Details.
So that piece there, those hours at a minimum are essential.
How many hours a week?
Right now, she's uh putting in for eight hours a week, sixteen hours a pay period. And uh the bonus on that is, you know, she can do a lot of that stuff on her own, on her own time, and she only charges the eight hours a week, so it's, I think it's a, a good deal for the town. The details alone, the money it brings in for the ten percent is basically paying for itself as well.
Okay.
It's true. Talking twenty thousand dollars a year.
Exactly.
The details are making.
In fact, well, yeah, I kept printing the wrong year.
I think when this was first put in about the ten percent, the board of selectmen had wanted to have somebody take charge of that, and the accountant and the treasurer at that time, they thought would be overloading them with that, so that's another reason that they did hire her to do that particular work, and if you look at all the details that have come in, there's one little space there that says ten percent admin assistant. It was to help pay for that new position at that time, I mean, this is, we're look, we're looking back thirteen years.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to remember, because I was at the board of selectmen meeting that particular night when all that was discussed about and how the money was going to be handled, and since it is a lot of money handling, the less hands, the better, that it's going through. And she's, she's done her job.
Quite well, actually.
This doesn't help.
Well, that's what was there.
Yeah.
But wouldn't it be in the article as it was, didn't they, in the, in the text version?
This is the actual budget.
Yeah, yeah.
The master budget.
Right.
And that doesn't break it down like this.
Right.
That's only.
Was there a, a, a special?
That's right.
Article?
That, like, was there an article?
Well, yeah, we know that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not what.
Okay.
He wanted to see the, what was approved at the annual budget.
Annual.
Okay, I see.
But the annuals got it all jumbled in together like.
Right. Right.
That's the overtime, the admin assistant, the part time.
Everything.
But figure that out. You know. You can go to the bottom line of every section.
And then have to do a math?
Have to do math.
I did just have three candies, so maybe I'm getting there.
So.
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, forty seven thousand, seventy one, twenty is less than the fifty four that's listed.
But are we gonna, and is there any chance we're gonna end up in the same boat of having to bring money in? bring money in?
I don't, I don't think so, because I carefully calculated this out. So right now, I'm running thirty-two hours a week of regular scheduled shifts. Holiday coverage uh times two part-time employees, a time and a half. And that, I've got that figured out. Sick time coverage is a hundred and ninety-two hours a year. If you were to take them all, so that's not gonna be something that we're gonna expend all that, all those hours. Maybe if somebody gets sick and was out for the full amount, but that's an unknown number. Uh, training hours, that's static. Miscellaneous investigations and unforeseen emergencies, I put in for a hundred and sixty because that's about average. It could be more, it could be less. But if you combine them all together, it gives, it gives a little breathing room in there, so I don't think going back to the um special town meeting is gonna be possible.
All right. You asked for part-time wages of eighty-eight thousand nine eighty-three.
Correct.
You can get by with forty-seven oh seventy-one.
That's at level funded with minimal coverage. The reason I asked for.
Minimal coverage is what you have now, because you don't have anybody working after midnight.
Correct.
So that's the forty-seven.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, before that, and I wrote right on the, the sheet, minimum to maintain coverage that we currently have.
Right. And you know eighty thousand was with the additional coverage.
Right, that would have gave us extra hours into the night. Uh, so I, what I did was I broke it down into three paragraphs. Uh, the first one was the seventy-two hours a week. Second was fifty-two hours a week.
Yep.
And then the last was level funded.
Bare minimum.
Yep.
And um you, technically, your shift starts at eight?
Yeah, it starts at eight o'clock, eight, eight to midnight. And the reason I did that was to carry us into the night a little further than, you know.
Do you, if, if you had to pick, would the seven to eight be more advantageous than the twelve to one? Mine, from where I looked at your data, it looked like earlier, like starting the day at seven was busier or eight o'clock. You had, because you're doing um the school.
Yeah, we start at eight o'clock at eight fifteen, we're at the school and uh usually what I do is I do a couple of property checks and shoot over to the school. And then I do the uh, you know, the traffic there. And then after that, it's business as usual, either admin or patrol. Starting at seven AM, I mean, we certainly could do that. We'd just end an hour earlier, we're ended at eleven.
Yeah. I was just trying to think if we added any hours, you still are stuck with two shifts.
Correct. Well, what I wanted to do with this program, if I got the, the high number, the eighty-eight thousand, I wanted to run people like six to two, six at night till two in the morning, have two officer coverage on a Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, which would be advantageous during the summer months, because our population just about doubles with the two campgrounds. So after that, we get party calls and, you know, I've, I got called out at two AM to, to answer a party call last summer. And of course, you know, you get that guy who's drunk in your face and you're alone.
Just what you proposed right now is a forty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollar reduction from what you originally put in for. So when we're looking at the grand total of things and being a hundred and ninety-six over, we're not anywhere near that anymore.
Right, because that eighty-eight.
That was in there. Yeah.
I mean, I understand if I don't get the extra, but I really can't go beyond the minimum. Because then we, we'd start losing service.
Then you're going backwards.
Right, right.
Right.
I mean, the question that I personally had is, is it, is now the time to go up to eighty-eight thousand after the full-time um sergeant?
Right.
And full-time chief.
So I did propose an alternative to that, which was fifty-two hours a week, which brought it down to sixty-eight thousand twenty-seven twenty. I was kind of thinking out of the box and gave uh two options as opposed to level funding.
Could we have, could we have option one and option two these um articles?
Yeah, you can have anything you want on an article, but where are we gonna fund it from?
So you have to, you would have to go to like transfer free cash or?
We've got a point to where. And again, we want to be careful with the free cash balancing the budget because it fluctuates.
How about a non-binding question of um the town's appetite for then what the town's belief and the need for that overnight, knowing that that will increase the costs going forward?
Yeah, you could do that.
Do we want to have twenty-four seven coverage? Yes or no?
Question, yes.
Well, that would be, it wouldn't be twenty-four seven, but it would be advancing to it, sure.
Oh, because it was six to two.
It'd be like six to two. So the majority of my bad calls happen after midnight. And inevitably, and I, this has happened to me a few times this year, is at twelve fifteen, I'll get called out, fifteen minutes after the officer has left for the night. That's happened several times um. Lately, it's been earlier morning. I've been getting the calls earlier morning, like five thirty, six AM.
Is this six to two only in the summer, the middle one?
Yes, it's uh, it's, well, it's Monday, uh, it's uh Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I think it's, it's.
Year round.
Two weeks, yeah.
Okay.
But it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So there is a possibility maybe to bring that back to just a summertime.
Sure, we can do it for uh four months.
May through September?
Sure.
Because you got the.
June, July.
Campgrounds close around the fifteenth of October.
Yeah. I mean, if that's something you wanted to experiment with, I'd be open for any of that.
I think there's a case to say summer, this cer- I mean, you've got Treasure Valley, you've got the two campgrounds.
Parties.
We're certainly growing as far as uh population-wise with the campgrounds, because they've expanded into the hill and into the uh other, the power lines.
Yeah.
I don't know what their population is anymore, but they pack them in there tight and they sell out.
To do that, three days, just for the summer months, the handle, that's probably about ten grand.
Above the forty.
Above the forty.
Seven.
Forty-seven, so it'll be fifty-seven.
Yeah, I, I personally would feel more comfortable knowing the other challenges and priorities in the budget that it's a tempered increase.
Yeah, I, I, I get it. Thing that just bothers me so much is that you're only raising appropriate a hundred and twenty-five and the school is already there at a hundred and forty-four.
Yeah.
So now we're dipping into free cash.
To pay for this new.
Pay for. I mean, I don't have a problem using up to like a hundred fifty thousand in free cash, maybe two hundred. But at what point? Even at that midway thing that he just said, you're still gonna save from what he originally requested, thirty-two thousand. Town's growing. There's, there's no way around this, you know? We'd like, like to keep it simple, but it's not gonna be simple much longer.
No, it isn't.
You know?
I, I mean, in the causes of disturbances, we know that children are having increased mental health issues.
Yeah.
Adults are having increased mental health issues, which may cause some of these, well, ha- have caused some of these calls, even recently, I think.
Yeah. I had one in particular where a gentleman wanted to uh utilize the police for suicide. That was after midnight. That was a, I think a one or two o'clock in the morning call.
And that, that doesn't necessarily even mean that we're only looking at the potential individual causing that. It could be to other people, victims of that. So.
Yep.
Just the patrol alone, having somebody on after midnight, you'd be surprised at who travels through your town. And what are they doing? And Don's smiling, he knows.
I bet out of Oakham, knowing what time people went to bed, when you come back into town.
Yeah, it's perplexing at best.
We'd have to give everybody fair warning.
Unlike you, I just hate to keep pushing and pushing, because we, we're running out of space to push any further.
What we can do is go at the baseline and see what happens.
After Wednesday.
School budget is finally over with and what we get for free cash in the fall and what our finances look like.
We could.
Not gonna help the summer.
That's what I was gonna say, it's gonna miss this summer.
Are you gonna expend that thirteen thousand dollars before June?
For the returning money?
The returned money?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
How about?
Well, I have what I have left for ours. Um, I don't know exactly what can transpire between now and then. So if I don't have any serious uh incidents that are gonna gobble some of that up, then it depends. You don't think I'll make it?
It's gonna be close. You're looking, just your baseline is like eight grand.
Yeah, no, I figured it was at least eight.
So four grand, what can you do a month?
Yeah.
What if we did a trial using ARPA? Not even doing the full ten thousand, but to do, because it would be starting in July. I mean, in theory, you could start in July, but, you know, select Friday, Saturday.
So twenty-four hours a week. It's ninety-six hours a month, July, August, September. That's two hundred eighty-eight hours, fifty-seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Then you're making a, you can figure out if there's a return on investment.
Right. Yeah.
In- instead of putting our, all of our eggs in a basket, costing ten thousand dollars, it, it may not be worth it, but we've budgeted it and we've taken money from free cash.
Yeah. The other thing you could do is take fifty thousand in opera and pay one of these departments, rest of their thing, and next year that will turn into free cash.
Yeah.
Brooklyn just did that with seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, did they find out? Because I know they were talking about the school budget.
That's what they did.
Wow.
That way they can determine where that money's gonna go.
Yeah, I just don't know where they're yet on the ARPA, knowing how much is. Certainly, ten thousand wouldn't be a problem.
Read a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, we, there's plenty left, but.
But I mean, fifty-seven hundred is certainly workable.
I think it's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you say for hours, two hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eighty-eight hours for the summer.
Yep.
That started in July first, or the first weekend of July?
Yeah, that's what I figured here was July one.
And that way we can see from the fiscal year.
You don't have any earthquakes or anything else.
Those in May.
You could squeak May and June with that same type of coverage, that twenty-four hour, with what you've got left from the grant.
Right, yeah, so if you have this eight thousand just in patrol and then four thousand left just for.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Uh, this is fifty-seven hundred for excellent months, you certainly have.
Enough, yeah.
To get it going now. Now.
Right, I'll, yeah, wait till. Campgrounds open in May.
Next month.
Twenty-four hours a week.
Sounds good.
So we're gonna level fund this though, right? Forty-seven seventy-one.
Said, the forty-seven oh seventy-one twenty. That's the minimum. Like I said, that alone is forty-one eight, less than we asked for.
So.
So July first through. Like after Labor Day.
Yeah.
On the ARPA?
Just so I can give it to Lori fully on record.
We'll round this off, six thousand.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we use six thousand dollars in opera money to supplement the police budget for weekend coverage.
Check it.
On the paper.
Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
No, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yeah, Sunday night would be a waste.
Okay.
In further discussion, I think um as a uh proof of concept consideration, this helps us understand whether this would be worthwhile for the.
Moving forward, moving forward, yes. I'm up to seconding.
I seconded.
Second.
He's like, you took my line.
Well, I, I, I was gonna make the motion since it was my idea.
I don't get to make.
I know.
I'll make this one.
Hi.
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 Problem solved.
Thank you very much.
And you know what happens if it doesn't solve the problem, don't you?
We lost six thousand of ARPA, which was free money.
Well, it is a good experiment.
And it's your fault.
No, he motioned it. I get into trouble.
And this will come out just to declare out of payroll on a week-to-week basis. They cannot take the six thousand and directly put it into the account. It has to be given, yeah, under that account every week.
On payroll, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Now's the question, six to two, seven to three, or do you care?
Go the tree.
Right.
Tell us.
Well, I'll run it by the officers and see what they think.
How many part-time officers do we have left?
Uh, so we're up to, we're back up to fifteen total, so that's what, fourteen, uh thirteen.
Okay, because I thought we were starting to lose them pretty quickly.
One came back.
One never left.
Right, that's.
Yeah, one never left, which was, which was good, because she's actually an asset, Alyssa.
Well, she didn't leave.
Nope.
So what she did was she um, she did the job at WPI and she worked there for four months, five months. Feel like working full-time down there. So she resigned, in the last minute, she pulled. So she resigned, last minute she called me, she says, I'm resigning. She asked to talk to me, she come up to the office and said she'd like to stay, and I said, well, you haven't been, you haven't left yet, so now she's teaching during the day. Went from being a full-time police officer to an educational role. But she's still here. She actually responded to the emergency over in Rutland the other night when they thought they had somebody lost in the woods.
Oh, the plaything, yeah. We're all set with the police budget?
Yes.
Town clerk.
Is that a squirrel? Um, let's see, town clerk.
She put in for to go from ninety-eight forty-eight to fifteen-six, but that was additional hours.
That was on average of twelve hours.
Right.
Right.
And we had talked about fifteen.
Yes.
But if we were not funding the clerk, we have no funding for the clerk at this point. So do we take it from the three hours? Well, that's only up to twelve, right?
Mm-hmm, that was her, the twenty-five dollars an hour for twelve hours is what she did, and if you calculate that, I believe that's right.
Did you see the email, something about, from FinCom or Allen about the clerk and the treasurer? I just didn't know if you guys saw that.
Yeah, instead of ten thousand, fund six thousand and split it between the three. I, I don't think, you can't get the job done. And.
I just didn't know if you guys saw.
There was a proposed ten thousand dollar increase and he's
Between the
between those three departments, and he's suggesting only funding six thousand of that ten thousand and splitting it. But I think as it is, the treasurer is already.
Well, I, I don't think it's the hours, it was.
He, he's calling it salaries.
Right, because it's just the extra five hourly rate, even at that is the difference, like, for example, in the treasurer collector's office. Do you know what I mean?
Well, that's still three percent. That's not a big, that's not six thousand dollars.
But I think that the treasurer went up because it's a higher hourly rate, so it, it, the budget itself has to be according to her, it's let's say the same rate, the same amount of hours, but the rate is higher, so it's more money.
Yeah.
So we can't, we can't fudge that one.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying. You can't just offer the two if she needs three more.
Only rate.
Yes.
Fifteen hours a week. That hourly rate goes up by three percent, the same amount of hours per week is a thousand fifty-three.
Yeah.
A year. Where are we getting six thousand?
He said clerk clerk hour wages went up.
Yeah.
Well, he said clerk wages went up and
It was the town clerk, the treasurer collector, and
Was it the assessor? COA.
COA.
We took care of that.
Yeah. We have three positions, clerk, treasurer, and COA, all recommending salary increases of different amounts totaling just over ten thousand. Um, my thought is to allocate a two thousand dollar increase to each of the positions, that's six thousand, uh, which is four thousand less than the request. We could then address the town clerk at a special town meeting if we needed to do something more after someone is hired.
And we probably will.
I was gonna say, that's like, I think that's a
I, I don't.
Unlikelihood anyway.
Exactly.
Okay. So, see, she's recommending.
So it's the treasurer collector.
So fifty-seven fifty-one is what the clerk is recommending.
Um, oh, that's the increase, yeah.
Yeah. I just said the increase, town collector treasurer, ten fifty-three, sixty-eight oh four. The COA is nowhere near.
It was two thousand, I think, wasn't it?
About two thousand, right?
Yeah, so it's more than ten thousand.
So that's two thousand, that's eighty-eight oh four.
Oh.
As
And then maybe the three percent?
Oh, all right.
It'd be close to ten thousand.
Nine thousand sixty-eight.
Yeah.
That's if we're agreeing with a fifty-seven hundred dollar increase in the clerk's office.
Right, right.
Again, additional hours.
Right. I mean, at the rate where the, the hourly rate that we're currently compensating today, where what, was it twelve hours, an average of twelve? It's only at an average of twelve.
And you guys told her up to fifteen and she just, you know, met in the middle between.
That's fifteen thousand six hundred. Yeah. And again, the rate at twenty-five, if you do comparison shopping.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
We agreed on that as a temporary.
Yeah, yeah.
Thing, that's not the permanent rate, and we gotta look at the structure of. Pay grade. Probably just leave it at that number right now.
Well, I think so, I hope it ain't going any lower.
You're not gonna go any lower and get somebody.
No.
No, absolutely.
And that's only at twelve hours.
Right. Yeah, just leave it.
Um, do you do the three percent?
I didn't, but we should, yeah. Sixteen oh sixty-eight.
No change.
You know, there's something else that we haven't moved on that the audit has told us to, is the driveway permits that are sitting there, thirty-four thousand dollars worth. That's free cash.
But it has to be moved to free cash.
Into free cash.
Yeah, and then you can move to, so that has to be before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wendy will know how to do that, because there's a way to do it. I mean, soften some of the blow of the school increase.
That's true. I forgot about that.
And if I recall, the accountant last year prior to Lori had suggested at least keeping the last four to five years, just in case, if the board wanted to, and, and then sending everything back to free cash prior to whatever window you guys want to set.
I think we figured very roughly, it was like, keep four and release thirty, you know?
I'm just curious, how many have we gone ahead and paved? Because that's what that money is for, isn't it?
Yeah.
So if we haven't done any paving of any of that.
Well, we don't, they do. The owner of the house does.
Well, and they get their money back if they do it.
Right.
But I think that the board, and if I recall correctly again, it was a discussion that a new application should be created with specific parameters. If it's not done within this amount of time, it's still forfeited. Because, I mean, now you have someone could come in ten years later and said, I finally did it, you know, so you need to kind of rail it into certain parameters that are realistic.
Didn't they say something about a policy needed to be created?
I was just gonna say that we do need a policy to make parameters.
And not for it to be in right, in right, and not just the word of mouth, like, oh, you need to do this in certain amount of time, I mean.
Yeah.
So.
We probably need a driveway policy, period. Not just that, maybe other things need to be done or refreshed along the years, like being thirty feet away from your boundaries.
Well, like what happened on Forest Hill with that rap? That was in the towns right away. And then the plow ripped some of it up the first storm.
Of course.
But that's the only increase in here was the, um, was that, was the salary, uh, nothing for posted, which is interesting. At least there won't be a, um, a presidential election in its turn around. Well, there will be in November.
In November, there will be.
Yeah.
The big one.
Put it out of your mind.
Is there another primary coming up as well? Or are we done with primaries?
We're done.
Yeah, he just has to run again Durant.
Yeah.
Oh, for his regular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And next is, uh, what is this? Uh, we'll do a support note, treasurer collector.
Okay. Yeah. Interest, it listed at thirteen seven seventy-five?
Yep.
It's actually twelve nine fourteen oh six.
Twelve nine fourteen oh six.
And that's the agents with the three percent increase.
Actually.
Thirty-six. All agents.
Yeah.
Um, is that, did you get that same number?
Yeah, with the three percent.
Thirty-six one fifty-three.
No change.
No change.
Oh yeah, we can reduce the payroll services.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be four thousand.
And just the wages looks like a, that nine percent, but it's making up for the difference in the hourly rate, yeah.
Yeah.
So I would change that to forty-five hundred, which would be uh, a thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
Which is really a reduction. She's, uh, that budget is forty-two eighty-one from the previous fiscal year. If it's formulas are all correct. No, it's not. That's just in that one section.
We've gotta also build in another insurance.
Right.
Into that sixty-two figure.
The library.
So.
Potentially. And it has to be in the department? Um, so that insurance is booked to that department and not in the general, can be moved.
Not in the department budgets, it's in the treasurer's.
Oh, oh, gotcha, okay. So that's twenty-two thousand-ish?
So it's about twenty-fifty a month for family. So twenty-four, six, and seventy percent is hours, that's seventeen two twenty. Seventeen five.
If it goes to there's insurance, group insurance.
Hey, yeah.
So right now it's at sixty-two thousand, which is, uh, was gonna be a twenty-three eighty-six increase, but we're gonna seventeen thousand five hundred, seventy-nine thousand five hundred. Nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six increased.
It looks like this one has the increase built in, the new rate.
Okay.
That's what she put in there.
That would be for the librarian. Are there any others that might need insurance that we haven't accounted for?
Everybody's got it.
Everybody has it. What about another new employee coming in? Is there a place where somebody there might want one that has not been, should we just put like, put one to one side, you know, build in another one just in case?
Even if you did a single plan, just have something in there.
We, you know, just to have on hand.
Yeah.
Because we are gonna be getting new employees, hopefully, you know, hopefully.
Well, all three in the highway have it. The two in the police have it already. The library will be additional, and you're saying have one spare.
Just one spare.
Because you have been doing that in the past.
Yes.
We have.
Yeah.
Sometimes we put a family, one to one side, but even just one would be a spare for us, as it will. Yeah.
Even if it ended up being a family.
So I mean, if you did a single one, it would be ten thousand six oh eight. Well. It's not across.
Oh yeah, seventy percent.
It could very well work out that way. We don't know what's gonna happen with highway.
Could be at least seven grand, but.
So we may end up using it faster than we think.
We are at, where are we?
Seventy-nine.
That's without that extra.
Probably should make it eighty-nine.
Ten thousand aside? Oh, eighty-nine even or eighty-nine five. Okay.
Although some of our police savings just disappeared. But it's gonna end up being.
Alex, the must haves and well, these are must haves for the insurance. Without choice.
What about um because I wasn't at the meeting in June? Uh, the talk about covering retirement. That's not budgeted right now.
Are we going to try for an article for that?
They've requested it. All three departments are requesting it.
Are they really?
I haven't seen anything. You know, but the word was all three are going to put an article in.
We should have gotten some recliners.
I know. I have these meetings, have them upstairs.
You guys could go get those nice comfortable chairs. So if this were an article, it wouldn't necessarily come from the budget. It would be a decision of use free cash or stabilization if it's a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, could be.
Raises the bar if it's a stabilization, makes it much harder.
It does.
It would run about seventy-four, seventy-six. That's an estimate.
Seven thousand? At fifty percent?
At fifty percent.
Is that the lowest amount we could give or offer? Fifty percent?
Well, it depends. If you adopt the law, it's a minimum of fifty. Other towns will do sixty-five and seventy and seventy-five.
That's them.
That's what I'm saying. That's up to the individual town. So you're going to hear people say, seventy percent, how come you're only paying fifty? That's what that town adopted. They want to do seventy, let them do seventy.
Are those towns, do you think also only doing seventy percent for health insurance? Or do you think they could be doing more?
Well, I can tell you Rutland is seventy-five twenty-five. Retirees and
I, I was surprised we were only seventy percent.
Right, straight through. So North Brookfield is sixty-five thirty-five. For the retirees.
Okay. I would hope not for their health insurance.
I don't know what the full-time people are, but I did ask. It was sixty-five thirty-five.
I think mine's fifty fifty.
Shrewsbury?
Well, they have more. Employees, more retirees. So to keep it manageable, yeah.
But they have a lot of nice highway equipment.
Yes, they do.
They have everything. Plus the high tax. But they also have million-dollar houses.
Oh, yeah.
And how many are they building? I'm sure they're doing a lot of new growth.
They're still, yeah, they are.
So we really can't even put this in the budget because it's not been adopted?
Are we going to use the same wording for the article that we had put up for last year?
The wording is a statue.
My understanding though is who's eligible for it is up to the community? Like how many years you've worked for the community? No?
We wanted to do that. We talked about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Town council said illegal. You can't accept that. As long as you are eligible for county retirement.
Wherever they've worked.
Which is twenty years.
So if they came in with nineteen years and they work here one year, we end up paying
A prorated amount. Every town that you worked for, you much into that retirement or into that insurance. It is prorated.
So it's not like we're being, we're on the hook because we take somebody that's coming with all that experience?
I didn't realize that. I thought that was the issue. Why not? And when I called the retirement board on myself. Middlesex County is paying pot, Worcester County is paying pot, Hampton County is paying part. So got to confirm that.
I don't think there's anything else we can do um in trigger collective.
I think we're all set there.
Next is tree warden. Level funded? Um, veterans agent was level funded. And is this where um abatements come, does do abatements come from this or is that?
And this is based on her census of the
Yeah, and she, yeah, and she Yeah, she gave me something.
Somebody who, but I believe was getting this benefit no longer lives in Oakham. They're selling a house on um Gaffney.
Oh, I, I know who, I think I know who you mean. She is
Well, the house is on the market.
Yes.
And I think it's under um contract.
It's a nice house.
It is. Got a nice little shed garage thing out in the
Yeah, she did it calculated, I'm sure, based on her, what she does in Oakham.
We're doing a three percent on this person too.
That's a salary. Eighteen fifty-six oh six.
I didn't, I don't even think this even had a line. Eighteen fifty-six oh six. Nope, it did. Okay. Wait a second. What is this? Something wrong with the calculation, I think. Yeah, that's not right. Versus
And the expenses went up a little bit because she does like her yearly uh recertifications and training and the chunk of it comes from um North Brookfield. Because that's where she's primarily and she'll use a little bit of it for her meal portion or you know, when she's gone for the week or weekend from Oakham, very minimal.
Fifty-four dollar increase.
There are notes, new case.
Oh, yep, new case.
Okay with this. Okay with veteran.
Next is CVA.
CVA is level.
Level funded.
Hey, we're done.
So can we remember what we said on Wednesday? Were there some other areas that we were ready to, Agent and Alan said, no, think about it? Did we get all those? I know one was like bringing it to five thousand. Like a fifty percent reduction.
Contract service and spoon. Because we said that night, we
That was dangerous. Um, so Maribel, I hope that all the things that were changed have, they do all have new, new dates. So
All right, next on the agenda is the planning commission, planning grant.
Uh, is that the ADA one? Sorry, ADA review uh printout. Um, so CMR PC has worked to provide communities assistance with completing the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. And this is a, if we go forward with this grant proposal, um CMR PC believes this is a great opportunity to meet our town's obligations under ADA. Uh, this grant or this um review is a hundred percent grant funded um from the Mass Office of Disability. Uh, they would complete the ADA plan, they've completed AD plans for all these other towns. And North Brookfield is currently in the process of having their ADA plan done by CMR PC. Um, this grant, uh, if we opt to move forward, uh, begins May first, it's due June fourteenth. Um, CMR PC will assist in our application. Uh, they contract uh with a company that will actually come in uh, and work with us to complete it. They just need access to the building because they want to come in and look at all of the, the stairs, the bathrooms. Um, no local match is required. Um, there is some work, uh, there has to be a kickoff meeting with the department's heads and interested committees. They'll need somebody to let them into the buildings when that um organization needs to look at it. And they'll present their findings to the board to select them. Um, I asked the question um about, does this mandate us to do certain things?
That's what I want to know because they could put us in a very difficult situation. Or could they possibly close the town hall?
So on accessibility compliance, the legal risk to a town is if someone files a complaint over issues or worse gets hurt and files a lawsuit. While our plan would have recommended timeframes for improvement, short, medium, long, an ADA plan does not put you on the clock for compliance. It gives you legal protection in these cases as it shows the town is planning to address the accessibility issues. Once the plan is done, your obligation is to make good faith efforts towards compliance. Um, courts acknowledge the budgetary constraints as a limiting factor for compliance. So the plan would identify and help prioritize accessibility concerns while making you more competitive for grant funding to make the progress on improvements. So if we don't have the plan, we'll never get grant funding to make the improvements. So it's like the MVP. So we can keep our eyes closed and hope that nobody falls down those very narrow steps.
Well, that's what we've been doing.
Which could become a lawsuit.
Yes, it could.
So at least we get a objective idea of what are all the issues? And we
And if we want to fix up any of those issues, it's going to cost us an extremely large amount. Does this bring us more into attention that we've got that much that has to be worked on?
I think it might be the opposite. You have a plan you're working on. The question in the lawsuit is you knew or should have known, right? Right now, we know and should have known. With no plan. This way, we know we should have known with, we got a plan.
And there are budgetary constraints.
Budgetary constraints and that would mitigate any damages.
So I mean, like ADA during COVID, we took out all the stuff in the stall and the men's room. That was an ADA issue. We don't have, actually, is there grab bar? I think there is a grab bar. So I mean, there are little things that we can say we've done. But that, I, I have a picture. Listen, you can climb on that thing.
Paul did a very good job putting that um divider in the men's restroom. I have not seen it. But I know he was here and I, I know everybody appreciates him going above and beyond and doing that. So thank you very much, Paul.
While, while you're um deliberating on this, let me show you um the final product. The urinal um for our viewers at home who will see this at some point. So see?
Very nice.
That will withstand a heart, a earthquake, hurricane.
Just wanted to be sure, Lord, it'd get hurt going.
Because if we had used just these two brackets. You know, one person putting their arm up. So this is a, a metal uh, uh beam. Maybe the next thing could be some paint.
Paint would be nice.
It has been since twenty-twelve since that's been painted.
Since we were putting the urinal. And Paul also put up a paper towel dispenser so that the paper towels don't sit on top of.
Oh, good. Thank you for doing that. We have one. Uh, I think we did. No, it doesn't mean it's up, but I think I have one. I'll look.
So um
Thank you, Paul.
I, I think um you know, Americans with Disabilities Act was created to make sure that seniors um, people that have disabilities can enter a public building. And um I feel like we have a moral obligation, if not a legal obligation, to um take ADA seriously. Um, and to at least Um, and to at least get. An assessment. Of what needs to happen. And if we're talking about future changes in the town hall. If that's not a reason.
Mm hmm.
Um, I mean, there was a gentleman, I don't think he was an Ocam resident, that ended up going down those stairs a week or two ago. Those are not normal stairs.
No, they are not.
And we really were trying to say, can you go around? Without, he had a walker.
Oh, when he was waiting for it, yes.
If, if he had.
Oh, I know. There's many times that I walk behind people.
Bringing her stuff upstairs to use the vacuum.
Well, she's a, right, she's an employee of.
And she goes up and down at least five times.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
But then we have the ramp out there that. The only reason I'm still walking is because he caught me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I even think of, I even think of this ramp. Um, you know, there are people when I'm in here who come knocking on this door, but the door is locked.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So if the town hall is open, we probably should have that unlocked.
Yeah.
So that if somebody actually made the effort to use the handicap.
Yeah.
But.
Right.
Or at least the doorbell.
Nothing.
We should have one of those and I'm really concerned with the doors.
They're not. None of our doors are the correct.
Um.
Downstairs they are.
Okay.
But like the main door here.
We put up the doors.
Uh, the weather affects it. If it's windy.
Yeah.
You know, we have that doorbell that at least lets us internally know, but it's constantly going or it's not fully latching. Um. I know.
It fully latched on me yesterday. And I said, I don't believe that because I, I rushed out, put the dog in the car. I said, I left my bag inside. So I said, I'll put the dog in, I'll go in. I came back and I pulled and pulled and pulled on that door.
But it would not open.
But a couple of weeks ago, I had it lost. It was doing something all sudden I hear.
You mute this conversation?
And Lucy came in, I was like.
Somebody else came in today. Pulled on it, thought it was unlocked. Hmm. It had nothing. Um, so. I feel as though this is a, an appropriate grant to move forward on and um. Uh, is the right thing to do.
I would feel more comfortable having some sort of plan.
I, I, I have to agree with that too, even though I have ambivalent feelings about. They're going to come down and say, well, really, you know, you should have done this so long ago and you need this, this, this.
They'll tell you, you need electric doors that it can be opened with a button for somebody coming up with a wheelchair. They'll tell you how many handicap parking spots you're gonna have to have. I mean. I can do that.
Which is gonna wipe out a lot of our.
But they could do that now.
They can do that now.
And we should have that.
They could.
You know.
That's the law. I mean, why should a town choose not to follow the law?
But they also got to realize.
You can't do it.
Strapped with.
Yeah.
Cash.
School.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we need to do is move the town hall up into the central school.
I agree with part of that.
So you want to make a motion?
I would move that we uh, engage Central Mass Regional Planning. Um, in a uh, grant application with um. Uh, which would be fully funded. For the ADA uh, proposal.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll reach out to Connor. And let him know.
Yep.
There's, there's gonna be stuff we already know.
It just makes me nervous.
I know, I know.
It really does.
But I mean. What he was saying is that he really believes this provides some legal protection.
That's why I said, yeah.
Yeah, now we can say we're gonna work on doorknobs.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um. One a year. Until we can move.
I know it. And I don't think they'll count the upstairs because they'll just say you don't need to go upstairs.
It's a non-accessible.
You know, but everything else around here is really. Up for change.
So the next thing is the. Old business, get on a new business. Any new business?
I don't have any new.
Can I just say something on the old business? I know. You're working on replacing the hot water heater up at the elementary school. Uh. As a suggestion, and we have a very good plumber in town, Stephen Gaspah.
Right.
Who's also our, uh, a plumbing inspector, I believe.
He's an assistant.
I think, I think might get a, a very reasonable quote from him.
Yeah, we still need to get two more quotes.
Is that something that the school is doing?
No. Oh, sorry, you weren't at that meeting. You didn't watch it?
No, I did not.
Get Steve, you could get Mike Russ, you could get Mr. Comstock.
Yeah.
Was that at least plus?
Yeah, we should probably.
In town.
It wouldn't hurt to get three. Get those three.
Right. Doesn't say they can't be your inspectors.
That's right.
But does that, okay.
So they're willing to help us. They provided us one. Quote. But at the end of the day, it's our expense and.
Right.
How much was that quote?
Twelve thousand. Plus. Who was, do you know who it was from?
Labor.
He said that he had emailed it to us.
Oh, I'll have to look.
I didn't remember it. So.
And then we're still going to have the expense of fixing the outside of the building.
So.
The way they want it done.
Obviously, in order to get the quotes, these. People are gonna go to the school and make a determination.
Willing to help.
And get a quote.
Yep.
Okay, because the water heater currently is leaking?
Yep.
Okay.
And.
But still working.
Yes.
At the moment.
For now. For now.
Okay.
Tomorrow, maybe not.
Yep. And I was incorrect that the thing downstairs that leaks is the furnace, which. Is not unusual for a furnace.
For a furnace, yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking if our water heater can leak, why can't everybody else's? But.
The heat sections are all cast iron. And heat and contraction, they have slip joints between each section. It's very, very common for those to leak. You really notice like in the summer when you shut heat down.
Yep.
Yep. And that's when they really become. Noticeable. But it is, it's very common for those to leak. We need to do something with capital.
Uh, yes, uh, that's old business.
Yeah.
Let me, if I could just bring up this one for old business. Uh, this is the upstairs. Um. My son. Um, came today and um, finished uh, at least sorting. Um, the pile that was in the middle of the room. Uh, and so everything. On the left here is treasure collector.
Hmm.
Uh, and everything on the right is town clerk. And then this stuff over here are things that are Board of Selectmen contracts, um. Legal stuff. Um, that. We'll have to go through. Um. But um. Now that I think of it, I hope that um, stage is starting.
Oh, it is.
Okay, so um, and then everything else in this room is the junk of the Board of Health. And then all of the library stuff over on the right hand side.
Now that you've done it all and got it all into really neat boxes and everything, it's so easy now to digitize them all.
Have fun with that, Lucy. You went to the course.
I did. I mean, compared to what I saw that they were working on in the course, this is nothing.
Yeah. So.
But I'm not gonna do it.
So there's progress and.
The floor looked really nice up there. It was still shiny.
Um, so you know, now I, I think we need to. The plan to go through that treasury stuff, that's, that's at least a year's worth of work.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um, so I had it been like, oh, by April vacation, we could have it. So uh. We put, we allocated ARBA money for dumpsters and shredding.
Mm hmm.
So we're gonna have to um, have something. On the books of the cost and hopefully. We can say it'll be spent by December thirty first of twenty twenty six. Um, because I think that's more likely what's gonna happen. The clerk stuff. It's ballots that you're supposed to keep thirty days.
Yeah.
Um, but the treasury, there's a lot of stuff up there like. W twos, which are forever.
Hmm.
Um. There's um, over on the right hand side with the Board of Selectmen, there's um, police department files. Um, which it says uh, at the conclusion of the case. And appeals. But there's like lots of envelopes that you're gonna look through every single one of them. But that's the statute of holding on to them.
Yep.
Is when that is gone through the courts.
Right.
So I guess we just keep it for fifty years and hope that. The case is over, but.
We'll move it to the PD.
True, yeah. And a new storage thing.
Yeah.
So, um, but at least the room is, is now sorted. Um, and we do have volunteers who are interested in coming back. And even if they took a box of the, the, the vouchers.
Hmm.
To say nineteen eighty-two vouchers. And that's one at a time. Um, so I, I, we're in a better place now. Um, and then the other thing was the grant for the fiber.
Yes, I read that.
So you've read the, the face sheet and then the rest. So she was saying some outstanding questions are who's the grant signatory? And I said, Maribel. Um, already.
Yeah, I thought that one.
And um, the annual savings. So if that's something we can try to look at tonight or tomorrow. Um, to get her, how much do we pay? For spectrum, library, town hall, police department? We don't think we're paying anything extra at fire and highway.
No, uh, fire definitely pays for spectrum.
Really?
I think so. I, 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 I think there's a bill.
Yeah, if they are, then they're paying unnecessarily because the internet is coming from the PD.
But they, they're getting a bill.
Yeah, so it may not have ever been canceled.
That could be.
Oh, awesome.
So she wants to put in what the, just the charter internet savings would be.
All the spectrum bills.
Just for a month.
A month.
Yep. But other than that, I think, I think that's everything. And it's due Friday at noon, I think. I don't know. Yeah. But I don't imagine she's put in more than a, a couple hours.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll see.
That looks, that doesn't look very difficult.
Well, Erin did a lot of the work, so.
Well, that was my hope is that by doing all the front work, wouldn't cost a lot.
She, she's good at formatting and using the correct words.
Mm hmm.
The verbiage is very.
No, she was great to work with. Um, she just sent me the questions and I answered, got them answered.
Good.
And we're still waiting on national grid. Even after we get a contact.
Really?
Yeah.
Have you even begun to try Verizon?
Um, apparently Verizon does not have any.
Nothing to do with Verizon.
Stake in those polls. They all went to the grids.
Deal they made years ago.
Yeah, so that was a relief.
Well, that's good. But still nothing.
So. If um.
But you said you received a few emails, correct?
Yes, two.
Something from there, though.
Mm hmm. So if you're comfortable, I'll finish working with um. Maribel and blind, then we'll get this submitted by Friday.
Yeah, looks good.
Excuse me. Sorry.
You're awake?
And then um, we do have the IMA that we're hoping to get on the agenda for next Tuesday. Um, I think you, I said that right? For the Lester?
Lester, yeah.
Yeah, we need to get.
Oh, okay.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Um. And then the Board of Health has to meet the following Monday um, to approve it as well.
All right. Any other old?
What?
Old business, any others?
We're having zoning board meeting on May ninth and we've got another one coming, but we haven't received the application yet. It makes it a busy year. We've had two.
And just a reminder to everybody that on. The twentieth of April. From ten to two uh, is Board of Health roadside cleanup. Um, Dumpster Services is providing a dumpster for free. Um. And um, we've had, uh, there's a signup that you can register what street you're gonna do. Um, where we did postcards. Um, we're doing T-shirts for volunteers. Um, and the hope is we'll get more roadside cleanup. In total, because we don't get a whole lot of roadside cleanup even at the June one.
Hmm.
Um, so we'll see how good this one is. Um.
Do you provide the bags?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The day of?
The day, well, I, I, I think I put on the post that we might have them in the town hall and the library the week before.
Okay.
So I can get, we can use a box and I'll just put the blue bag and we've got plenty of them. So people can take what they think they're gonna need. So, and um, the students have been looking for volunteer hours.
Yeah, make my littles do it.
So the, the challenge is gonna be.
Good.
Picking up trash. If someone does old turnpike road. I'd, you know, hate to see people having to. Um. So in the future. If there was a way to have a highway truck or something that could pick them up.
Hmm.
Um. In the short term, it might be me with my trailer. Um, but.
Anybody working down there too should have the orange.
Yeah.
Locked up rest of this.
Um, but if I can re, ask the chief to just kind of do some patrols, extra patrols, maybe on the main roads. So. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just want to let the board know that I will create this agenda, but uh. The third applicant for the Assistant Town Clerk will. Interview via Zoom. Um, so they're scheduled for eleven, eleven thirty and twelve. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I haven't created the agenda yet.
It's this Friday?
Yes. And I know um, if you guys want to have any further discussion. Before interviews or after interviews, I just don't know the availability with. Your schedule, Erin. Primarily.
I'm fine.
I know.
I would prefer uh, it's safer if it's um. After.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I figured interviews and then further discussion. Okay. Don, is that okay with you as well?
True.
You're available, that's sure.
Are we gonna handle it the same way as we?
Yes, I actually already have a draft and I meant to.
With the questions and a, and a chart.
Um, chat GPT.
Yeah.
Um.[1683.92] Does all that for you.
Okay.
So I'll, um, I can email it to Maribel. Or, um, but um, I think it's nine questions or ten questions. Um. So.
Okay.
And then maybe we meet before, maybe we meet at eleven or ten forty, was it eleven?
So the first one's at a lot, at eleven. So do you want me to fade the agenda a little earlier? Or keep it for eleven?
Oh, we could do ten forty-five and.
Yes.
Okay, do the same thing.
Go right into the interview.
Yeah, but I'll send the draft and if there are edits to the questions, reach out to Maribel and. Um.
Good.
I'll do that tomorrow.
And. We still have one highway person coming.
Nope.